Mary.
Here.
Dashlet.
Here.
Dore.
Here.
Lattenbach.
Here.
Swedberg.
Here.
Meverden.
Here.
Havick.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Okay, will it stand for the Pledge of Legions?
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting is in compliance with the open meeting law. I'd like approval of the agenda as written or suggested changes to it. Can I get that motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Kevin made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
John's second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Public hearing. So, turn the...
Amber will come out and she's gonna kick this off for everybody here today.
Okay, point of order, do we need a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, we should.
Can I get...
Yes.
Could you ask for a motion to open the public hearing?
Okay, a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three none, it is open then, okay?
Okay, Mayor and council members, tonight before you is the most updated draft of the budget. There were a few changes since the work study that we had at the beginning of October. The, we did receive the 2023 transportation estimates, shared revenue estimates from the state. They were fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty cents more than we had originally estimated. So they took a pretty good jump this year. That hasn't happened in quite a few years. We also received notice from the schools that they changed the SRO contract to twenty-four hours per week rather than the forty they had originally asked for, so that reduced our revenues to forty-six, nine, forty-one, which was a reduction of nineteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. The original amount that I had estimated for the Housing Authority's payment in lieu of taxes, this is for the low-income housing up on Grandview Court. I had estimated it at ninety-seven fifty, but I found some paperwork that states that their payment in lieu of taxes is not calculated based off of our mill rate. It is ten percent of their rent less utility charges. So with that in mind, I raised that back up to the eleven thousand. The interest earnings that we had originally estimated at forty-eight thousand were a little bit more than what we had for this year, but only by about eight thousand dollars. Maybe a little bit more than that. The interest rates are through the roof right now. I just got new estimates from American Deposit Management where we buy CDs through. A three-month CD is three point nine-five percent and a six-month CD is four and a half percent interest. I, the last time we seen interest rates even close to that, you had to buy a three-year CD to get those good rates. So, looking at the CDs that we purchased over the last couple of months and what we know we have coming up in the next couple of months to renew, I bumped the interest earnings up to seventy thousand. I think we probably are gonna see higher than that, but at this point, I felt comfortable with seventy. So all those changes resulted in a net of nineteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents. So all we did was we plugged that into the contingency, just in case something goes wrong next year. The utility rates keep raising, the gas prices keep going up. So we have a little bit of cushion for next year, where when we first started this process, we didn't have any. Or a very small amount, it was only four grand. The tax levy that the city is looking at is the full possible levy we can take, which includes an increase due to our debt payments. So all this capital project improvements that we've been doing over the last several years, the roadwork, the sidewalks, and continue to work on, we have to borrow money to do all of that. Those payments that we make towards paying off that debt can be added on top of our levy. And next year, our debt payments are increasing by a significant amount. So we're between a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollars more than they were this year. So we have to add that on to the tax levy. There's no room in the budget to sustain that. So our tax levy did increase quite a bit. The, I had a few questions about the mill rates. Our mill rate, because of the reassessment or revaluation that we just went through, even with the increase to the dollar amount, the mill rate went down three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Now, that doesn't mean your taxes are gonna go down unfortunately. If your assessed valuation changed by forty percent or less, your taxes will decrease. If it went up forty percent or more, you're going to see an increase. Okay? The amounts of the levies from the schools, the county, and the city all get reported to the state and then the state takes those and applies a calculation to determine how much increment is to be paid out to each of our three tax increment districts. So those three tax revenues were adjusted according to my most recent updates to the budget with the levy amounts from the county and the school. We are still waiting on NWTC, so I don't know what their amount's gonna be. We don't have a say over it. Those TID tax levies, we don't get a say in that either. The state tells us what they're collecting. It's based on the base levies. Our capital projects fund, we, I went through the documents that we're updating currently and I added in seventy-three fifty for three computers in City Hall, fifteen thousand for police body cams and MDT computers, which the chief is currently working on grants to help pay for some of that. And then sixteen thousand dollars for fire department helmets was added in. I think that pretty much covers it. There is, I did pass out to everyone the budget notes. The second page of that budget note just kind of explains the property tax level and the mill rates. Our total assessed value last year was a hundred and sixty-five million. This year, the city's total assessed valuation is two hundred and forty-seven million. So we had quite a big jump, which is why our mill rate went down so much.
Amber.
Yes?
Of the, of the budget notes, increase in estimated interest earnings from forty-eight thousand to seventy thousand dollars, is that annual, is that based on a six-month CD roll over?
That's the annual amount based on when we get paid out from American Deposit Management. So most of their CDs, they pay when it matures. Some of them, they do pay monthly. Some of them are quarterly. It just kind of depends on the bank we get them through. So what American Deposit Management does is they go out to all the banks all throughout the United States and they look for banks that are running specials, so they get the really good rates. And then they come back and say, okay, here's what we have available, here's what you can buy. Right now, there was an article on Forbes that said the feds, they're expecting the feds to raise the interest rates again before the end of the year. So I'm buying three, six, and nine-month CDs. I'm not buying long-term. After the end of the year, then we'll start looking after twelve, eighteen-month CDs because I can't imagine feds are gonna continue to raise the rates like they have been this year. I may be wrong. So we just kind of keep an eye on it and try to purchase CDs in a ladder. So we're not lumping everything due all at once. We kind of spread them out so that there's always something coming due. So as we get payment requests in from the projects we work on, we have funds available to make those payments, but still earn the best interest we can.
So that's your feeling that, that increase, the loggia board with this sort of projection as well?
So he, he works more on the borrowing side, but yes, he feels that that's a pretty good guess, that they're gonna raise rates again.
All right.
Anyone else on the council have something you want to ask?
Amber, do you know what our rough mill rate is with the city and the county and everything per thousand? Do you know something on that yet?
So last year, our overall gross was thirty-two seventy-nine per thousand. This year, the estimated gross, because again NWTC doesn't have their numbers in yet, is twenty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents per thousand.
Okay, it's public hearing. Does anybody from the audience have any questions? Does any, anyone have any questions from the audience? Okay, one last chance. If anybody's gonna ask anything, okay. Doesn't look like anybody has any questions for public, so. Then at that point, we can close the, could I get a motion to close the public hearing?
You can close the public hearing. Just a note, if anyone's listening, we will be reviewing the budget once more at next week's Finance and Personnel Committee meeting and then we will hold a special council meeting immediately following to adopt the budget.
Okay. But at this point, we're closing the hearing then, okay? So do you not want a motion?
Yes, we need.
We need a motion, okay. So can I get a motion to close the hearing? Okay, Midge made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Casey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Okay, I would like an approval of the meeting minutes for the October third and eighteenth meetings.
Make a motion to approve both the third and eighteenth meeting minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Public comment? Is there anything from, any comments from the public on general matters? Okay, one more chance. Anybody from the public? Okay, well then we are moving on to consideration of bills, claims, and conference attendance. Okay, did everybody get a chance to look over the bills? And if so, could I get a motion to approve the payment of those bills?
I have some questions, I'll first.
Okay.
On the Wisconsin Department of Justice, what is that time access charge? What does that mean?
Randy.
I can answer that one. What that is, is our computer system where we check like people's license plate, driver's licenses, all that system. There's a fee to have that access from the state and that's the fee. We have to pay that at least once quarterly.
And that's quarterly, you're saying?
Typically, yes. The state gets around the bill and asks.
Okay, and can somebody tell me, I know I'm sounding illiterate here, but what is a tube broom, broom? What was that for? Six hundred and five dollars?
It's our main broom on the sweeper, the big broom. That's right in the middle of the street sweeper.
Okay, so you had to replace it, is that...
We replace it anywhere between probably three and five times a year.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we had a motion.
Did anybody make a motion to approve the bill?
We don't have, we don't have a motion yet. I would question the, de-invoice the Ferguson, but I'm not gonna go there. I'll make the motion to approve the bills as presented. I'll second.
Okay, would you do a roll call, Aaron, on the bills?
Meverden.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Lattenbach.
Yes.
Dore.
Yes.
Havick.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Move on to committee reports. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding any of the committee reports?
I have a concern.
Yes.
And I think it was in the RDA meeting, so anybody can answer it. In the redevelopment, you're saving like seventy-five thousand dollars for sidewalk. You're gonna let the public works put the sidewalk in. But at what cost to the city, and I don't mean monetarily. Last year, we had to pay someone to put in sidewalks because we didn't have enough time. Is that gonna screw us up for fixing the city sidewalks?
We didn't pay anybody last year to put in any sidewalks.
That was the concern, how much time are we gonna have? We had that discussion, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay.
And I'm not, I'm not, I just want to know that it doesn't affect the city's sidewalk repair to do sidewalk repair at the...
Yes and no, is the answer to that question. How much can we do? That's always a question of how much sidewalk can we put in?
Right.
I can put that sidewalk in internally for probably about, what did we figure, Casey, eighteen thousand? Versus the seventy thousand?
Yeah, it wasn't the money, it was more the time and the, you know what I'm saying? I'm not, I'm not, it's a, I'm not questioning it, I'm concerned.
Yep, and then the other reason for it is, Steve, is we have so much money allotted for sidewalk. It's not gonna affect that sidewalk work because this, this eighteen to twenty thousand dollars for sidewalk around the RDA block.
I would have thrown that comes out of the grant, correct? That's why I said monetarily, I'm not worried about it.
Because the grant is expended, but it'll be built into the TIF.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I'm more worried about the time.
Time. We're gonna probably end up doing more sidewalk this coming year than we did even in twenty-twenty-three than we did in twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
Exactly how many feet did we get done, Casey? I don't think we ever put a true measurement into it. But it'll be a pretty easy run. So, and to be honest, that sidewalk still might not get done in twenty-three, depending on where they are. I don't want that sidewalk to go in prior to construction being almost complete.
Yeah.
So that's our big reason for taking it out is I didn't want to spend seventy-some thousand dollars on sidewalk and then have construction equipment drive over it for a year and a half.
I'm, you know, I commend you for the savings, just sidewalks and roads in the city of Algoma are a hot topic and we don't want to do it there and then negate something else.
Correct.
Okay?
Any other questions about any of the other committees? Any other questions? Not then, could I get a motion to approve the committee reports as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, second is Steve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the committee reports are approved. There is no old business to go over, so we're on to new business, the liquor license application.
Okay, so there was a liquor license application for Off the Hook Bar and Grill LLC taken out by Tim Chernacki. It's for two oh five Navarino Street. Used to be Hudson's, used to be Stadium Diner. This went through the PPP. It was recommended from the PPP to be approved at the council. All of the background checks have been taken out and are passed. All of the building permits have been taken out and are in line. They are hoping to open by deer hunting.
Aaron, just general question.
Hold on one second, Jake.
Did they say what they're, is it just gonna be a bar or a restaurant?
Bar and restaurant. And they, a little background about Tim is his family is, I don't want to say big into bar ownership, but kind of big into bar ownership. I don't know if anybody sort of sees these. That's part of the family, not to say that Tim owns that, but he's got an extensive background in restaurant, bar management, so felt pretty comfortable with it.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? I believe we would still have two liquor licenses available after this.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion was made by?
Mr. Mary.
Jake and seconded in by Scott, to approve the liquor license?
Yes.
Aaron, do you want a roll call?
No.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, and motion is approved. Okay, the next item is the Public Safety Building Engineering Services.
Everybody has that. We talked about this at Finance and Personnel. I brought back a price from Robert E. Lee. We were estimating to be somewhere in that forty thousand dollar range. If you go down to page three of six, it gives you the summary of the fees. Everything else from there above is kind of the description of what it is and what would all be done. But a lot of this work, like I said, is the topo design, which is the topography, wetland fill, site engineering, stormwater management plan. That total bill is, comes back from Robert E. Lee at eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars. If the council would so choose to do this, this would then be the next step to allowing our contract, design, bid, build to go and get some true numbers once they have this work completed, okay?
There was a permitting, wetland fill permit. Would they find out if we were permitted to do that in this eighteen thousand?
That is correct.
That'd be cool.
That is correct.
And the lifetime of this permit, Matt, is how long?
Three years. Once we applied for the permit, the day that we received the permit, it would be three years from that day.
Do you know, Matt, would they also tell us how much we would be allowed to fill if we...
Yes. Yes, now, when you ask that question, that is a very, how much are we allowed to fill? Because there's give and take on wetland permitting, so.
Hope for a dry year.
This would be the plot that you, everybody has a design. What you see in green is more or less what they would be looking to put into this eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars. The, yeah, so part of this that's already done is we've already had the wetland delineation completed. That was on the whole thirty-nine point four acres parcel, okay? So that, you're not gonna see that whole wetland delineation on what I sent you from Robert E. Lee or are you gonna see that on these plans that you have paper copies in front of you of?
Okay, any other questions regarding this? Not, could I get a motion to...
So, in this, is there a reason that we have to immediately approve this? As far as, you know, if they couldn't start till January anyway? And the only reason I'm saying that is because as I was thinking about things, if there's, if there's a way that we can figure out to let the public know how much it would cost, like with, you know, there's, there's, there's areas around the chimney right now that are leaking or whatever. You know, if, I think, before we were to go to referendum on this, I think it would be advantageous to have something online stating, you know, you know, if we don't do this, here's what the cost is gonna be to fix things up. Because I don't think last year when they were looking at that, I don't think any numbers were actually, at least I didn't hear of any, you know, so if we need fixing on the roof and if we need something, you know, so that people understand we're fixing up a hundred-year-old building and if it costs a million or something to fix it up, to get it where, to where it needs to be, you know, then when the referendum goes out, the people have a much better idea of, okay, well this makes sense then to have the new building. But I'm just, you know, just to solidify before we spend another twenty thousand, just to solidify, get us on better footing with how the, you know, the difference between the two buildings and what it, what it would mean. Just something that I was thinking of and I...
Didn't you have that out there somewhere? Did I see four million somewhere?
Performa did that and that was...
That was four million just about by the time...
I thought so.
To make it ADA and everything.
Yeah, there was, was it three seven five or was it four two five?
Just under four million.
Just under four, I thought it was like four million.
So.
And how long ago was that, did that come out?
That was done in twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, okay.
Yes. Yeah, I believe at the end of twenty twenty was completed with Performa.
I thought I just saw that somewhere too, but I don't know.
But the second part, or maybe the first part of your question, Midge, is, is this an emergency to have done, okay? This is, we now have a, throw a dart at the wall price to go to referendum. We could complete this work and go back to our design bid build, Bayland. And then they, at that point, they would be able to more or less give us a lot sharper number and more or less lock us in on a price instead of, here's a broad number. So when we did go to referendum, we could say, this is gonna cost X versus we're trying not to exceed three point seven five million. Anybody else have questions?
I don't have any questions, just more or less a statement to reiterate or recap that this is the first step in getting that true number that we need. And being that it came in half or just below half was what the initial estimates were at that forty thousand, I think, you know, it's, it's a no-brainer. It's something that we need to do in order to get that accurate number for construction, which the goal and intent and through many of the ad hoc committee meetings was to get that accurate number and get it down as competitive as we need, as we possibly can, so.
Do you have, Scott, a breakdown of that number?
Yes.
A complete breakdown of that number?
Yeah.
As far as the budgetary number?
Four million dollars doesn't mean anything to me. What are we spending four million on?
Correct.
You had that from the Finance and Personnel, I think?
Did we have that?
It was part of your packet of the Finance and Personnel, I do believe. But I'm gonna, I apologize, whether you have it or don't have it, because I can't guarantee that you do. We will now, if council so chooses to go this direction on Finance and Personnel, we were asked at Finance and Personnel, we want to see a picture of where are we at today, okay? At Finance and Personnel here in November, we will put this on the agenda, sit down with the Fire Chief myself and go through the plan that we currently have to date.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, and I, I would go for a more accurate number, for sure.
Yep, and you're gonna have a breakdown in there of estimate electrical, estimate HVAC, estimate concrete. It breaks that down, what's bedrooms, TVs, beds, couches, versus this is the true cost of the building and so on down the line.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, Jake.
Yes, this estimate from REL?
Yes.
What's, what's our drop-in date on this? They give us sixty days? What's, what is our, what do you anticipate they're willing to hold this assessment for, how long?
I, we have a pretty good working relationship with Robert E. Lee. I think if we wanted to push it back, we could push it back to when we wanted to. As far as, as push it back and still guarantee this price?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that would be an issue.
So we could do it for spring?
Well, yeah, and I was just thinking, the loggia vision commented that they probably wouldn't start in January. Is that correct?
Didn't it say something on there that they would start doing that work in January?
Yeah, but they're, they're not gonna bill us until this work is all complete.
Correct.
But they're not gonna start on it until they tell, we tell them, yes, go ahead.
Be okay to start with permits and everything that might take that long.
Yeah, especially with the permit portion of it.
Yeah. You get it with the permits with the DNR in the state.
So that, it's where the shovel hits the ground is when the clock starts, and Jake.
On, on, the permit, Jake, until the referendum passed, we would not enter into a permit with the DNR until that point.
Yeah, permitting services.
Then we would have three years on the top of graph.
If, if you go down a little bit, scroll down to the next page, which would be four or six, you see where there's soil borings, three thousand dollars. The wetland fill permit, additional two thousand dollars. If something wouldn't happen, we would never, not even enter in, let's just say this goes to referendum and we don't, that wouldn't, it wouldn't be voted for, we wouldn't enter into those bottom prices.
Okay, so it really is a material that when we were okey-dokey this, it isn't a matter of finding it?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, good, I'm done.
Any other questions or comments? Not, could I get a motion then to do the engineering services with Robert E. Lee?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, would you do a roll call, Aaron?
Dashlet.
Yes.
Havick.
Yes.
Dore.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Lattenbach.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, okay. Then we're on to the administrators' report. Do you have anything?
I do have a couple of things here, quick. For those that haven't seen and for everybody that's on TV with us here this evening, the RDA block, all the houses as of today and the basements are completely removed off-site. They have probably a very low percentage of topsoil that had to go down on the property and then everything will be dormant, seated here this week. The sidewalk in front of the existing houses that are left on the block, which are... which are going to be in the southwest quadrant, the three houses, those three houses sidewalk from the alley around the corner will be going back in, probably Wednesday this week, Thursday of this week, that sidewalk will be going in. And the, our, the RDA, I'm sorry, the wheelchair ramps on all four corners of that block will be going in later this week. Northeast Asphalt is scheduled to be here at six-thirty tomorrow morning, and they should at least have a hundred percent of the binder coat on to include the alley, and probably start on the final mat. I'd like to get, hopefully, out in front on Fifth Street, out in front of Denny's, that final mat, to get that parking lot back open and that back to where it was. But they should, everything goes right, finish blacktopping on Thursday. All right, there, down the middle of the alley will just be blacktop binder mat. Those catch basins are set lower to just match the binder coat. We will not be putting a final mat on the alley until construction is complete as well, because that'll be a pretty well-traveled construction area. I didn't want to leave it in just gravel, we do plow snow through there. There still are three residential homes that have their garages that come off of that back there. So that's where that is right now, in the back. So, me and the fire chief, Tom Ackerman, and Rory, the captain of the rescue squad, are continuing to work on contracts with the town of Pierce, Anna P., and Lincoln. The ninth at six-thirty, we are meeting with all three townships together here at six-thirty, here at City Hall this Wednesday. So that's all I have, and just so I don't say anything wrong, I'm going to turn it over to the clerk, and she's just going to update everybody on election day and election days to come.
Bear with me, there's a lot of information here. First and foremost, the general election is tomorrow. The polls open at seven, they close at eight PM. Please be sure to bring a valid photo ID with you. If you are not registered, please bring in acceptable proof of residence as well, and we will get you registered. Absentee ballots can still be delivered to the clerk's office on the day of election until eight PM. And now, we're going to skip forward to spring of 2023. For incumbents who do not wish to see reelection in spring 2023, you will need to file the notification of non-candidacy papers, the EL-163. These are due by December twenty-third. For anyone interested in running for alderman for the spring 2023 election, December first, 2022, is the first day that nomination papers can be circulated. The Declaration of Candidacy, the EL-162, and the nomination papers, the EL-169, are due by five PM on January third, 2023. The spring election information can be found on the city's website under the Clerk Department and in the News and Announcements section. For anybody who is up for reelection, I will have packets of paperwork with the non-candidacy and the circulation papers, whichever you choose to do. I just need them back from you by the dates mentioned above. And for anybody in the general public who would like to run for office, I will also have packets made up in my office that you can come and grab, or they are available online. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Erin.
Erin, will you have curbside voting?
Yes, we have to have curbside voting. There will be locations at the front of City Hall and at the back. Behind City Hall, there is a handicap accessible sign, and it has my phone number on it. That phone comes directly to me, and if you need to curbside vote, just give that number a call, and we'll come out there and allow you to do so.
That was, thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
I don't necessarily have a question, but I think it'd be appropriate, and I'd like to, as president of the council and also chairman of PPP, take the opportunity to publicly thank Kelly Cosse, his years of dedication in service as the captain and EMS director, stepping down, still obviously serving as an advanced DMT. Thank you to him. And then also say congratulations to both Rory Grussel for filling that position, and then Mike Swoberda for backfilling Rory's position as the lieutenant. So, kudos to all three of you guys, thank you for your service, and to the public that's watching TV, make sure you thank them as, if you see them out in the grocery store.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, anything else for the administrators' report?
That is all I have.
Okay, okay, then with the mayor's appointments, we had put together a group that was looking at the downtown parking issues, and we needed to add a few more people.
Yeah, this is my fault, I apologize for this. This is just three people that I forgot a month ago. So we did have our first meeting, these people were, attended our first meeting just through the mayor's appointments, because everybody else was appointed by the mayor. It's three people that are being added, but really haven't been added. They've just, I didn't get my updated list to the mayor in time, and as she was reading them off at a month ago's meeting, I apologize to these three people, but go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we would like the approval of Jake Marion, Lindsay Bremer, and Jill Hindington to add to that. Could I get a motion to add them to the committee?
So moved. Second.
Okay, and we can just do it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, they are approved to be on the committee. Okay, the agenda for the next meeting, whatever you want to get, it's to either Matt or myself or Aaron to get it on the agenda. Our next meeting will be Monday, December fifth, at six PM here at City Hall. Okay, then the next item is, we would like to go into closed session.
The mayor's looking for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, the administrator, clerk, treasurer, and police department employees.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, would you do a roll call on?
I have a motion made by John Havick and seconded by Lee Dashlet. All right, and a roll call vote, Mary. Dashlet.
Yes.
Lattenbach.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Dorr.
Yes.
Havick.
Yes.